All those meeting in order, we will begin to pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Welcome to the March 22nd, 2021 regular school board meeting. Please welcome the question. All of our board members are present tonight. And board members, if you wish to take off your masks as we are separating, feel free to do so if you don't want to, you don't have to. So we will start with visitor comments. Are there any visitors here today who would like to address? We'll move to the consent agenda. For this, we have approval admitted from the February 15th, 2021 regular board meeting, the treasurer's report for February of 2020. Mr. Kerr, do you have the claims?
Yes, I do, sir. Thank you. The gross wages for February 12th to 2021 is $626,559.05. Gross wages for February 26th, 2021, $617,546.77. Claims and prepaids for February 1st through February 28th, 2021 is $1,198,211.26. For claims at regular vouchers for March 22nd, 2021 is $243,840.43. And for claims for Forest Hill Voucher for 3/23, 2021 is $16,869.57. For a grand total of $2,702,727.04.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. We also have a donation. There's a $467 donation from Donors Choose to Miss Sussabelli's classroom room. I always appreciate those donations. And Donors Choose has been been popular, effective way for the teachers to get out their assistance. We also have personnel resignation, retirements, renewals, leaves, and terminations, B, A through D, and appointments and transfers, E, A through U. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Move in a second. Any questions or comments? Any discussion? Very nice. All those members say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the business manager's report. So, Mr. Mayor.
Hopefully you guys can find the cash flows that I left there. I put it on the backside of your stack there. You've got a second to find that. Starting with the education fund as always. Again, the education fund is in good standing. We still project to be about even on the end of the year balance, which is something that we've continued to make sure that we reiterate those those things. Our projections for state tuition support are very accurate accurate through June as we have a really strong idea. So we know our February count. We know our all of our sped count and all of those other things that factor into the funding. And so we're we're very accurate through the June. Right now, July through the end of the year is still a strong estimate as we continue to hone in on what the legislature is going to do and what we expect our count to be in the fall. But again, we feel very confident with projections that we've given you with revenue. And again, we expect to stay pretty steady there. Debt service, there's nothing really to note much from February in this fund. We made a small trustee fee payment, but other than that, there was no activity in the debt service fund. And then turning over to the operations fund. Again, numbers came in very close projections. They're very steady. We made our large lump sum premium payment for our corporation insurance premiums. And so you'll note that our claims during the month of February were a little higher there. But again, with current projections, we expect to be in the neighborhood of last year's ending year-end balances, which again is right there in that range of where we want to hover and feel comfortable with with our financial stability at year-end cash balance goal. With that, I'll take any questions that you guys have.
Any questions?
You mentioned the annual premium for the interest. Are you happy with that scrap and the workers' comp premiums all stayed fairly level from the year before?
Yeah, it's they've been terrific to work with. They they're very on top of things. They're very easy to get a hold of, and they've been very helpful through anything and everything that comes up, whether it's a question that we have or a new situation that comes up. They're always very quick to answer the phone or turn a phone call and help us through any situation. So we've been very happy with the collaboration and the support that we've received so far through through this partnership.
Okay. Further questions? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, we have the next two presentations on both, but then we will go back and vote on each separately. So we'll give presentations, consideration to approve refunding resolution for the 2019 bonds, and consideration to approve the engagement agreement with Stiefel, Nicholas, and Company. Is well, so, Dr. Sanders?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kerr. We, the school corporation, has a a chance to save significant funds on future payments by refunding the 2019 bond. Tonight, we have Dennis Otten with Bose McKenney &amp; Evans, and also we have Matt Schumaker and Chad Blacklock with Stiefel Financial Group. And they are going to present about the bonds and also about the engagement agreement. And we're just going to let them do their presentation, and then we'll vote on both of those items separately. So Dennis?
Thank you, Dr. Sanders. Good evening, members of the board. I'm Dennis Otten with Bose McKenney &amp; Evans. Our firm has served as bond counsel to the school corporation for for a long time now. Many of you have probably dealt with my partner Jake McClellan, who's on a much deserved spring break this week, so I'm I'm at bat for him tonight. So as Dr. Sanders mentioned, there's a refunding opportunity for the school corporation. Matt will probably get more into the details about what you really want to hear, the numbers. But from a legal standpoint, the procedures to do a refunding bond issue for a school corporation, where it's just to capture the savings are rather streamlined. You've probably been through the process before of doing a project bond and are accustomed to holding public hearings and then having certain remonstrance periods. Those don't apply on refunding bond issues like this. The building corporation, just Matt, adopted a resolution that authorized proceeding with the refunding, very similar to the resolution that was in your board packets for this evening. And so the school board, if it wants to proceed, needs to take action on its refunding resolution. And that resolution generally authorizes proceeding with the refunding bond issue, authorizes the execution of the lease amendment document, which we have forms of. And just for your information, if you proceed with the refunding, the lease will be amended to reflect a reduction in lease rental payments that will go to pay debt service on the new bonds. And the resolution generally authorizes the board officers and Dr. Sanders to take such actions or necessary to proceed with the refunding. One thing I do want to mention is, by adopting the resolution, it doesn't commit the school to do the refunding. This is really to get the authorizations in place so that when the school is ready to take advantage of the market, if and when that should exist, we'll be ready to act quickly. But with that, unless there's any questions, I'll turn it over to Matt. Thank you.
I'm going to go over this. I think everyone has a copy of this. It's just a couple pages long. Matt Schumaker, my colleague Chad Blacklock, I know we have presented in front of the board before. I think last time it was virtually, so it's great to be here in front of all of you tonight. As Dennis just talked about, we're here to talk about the 2019 bonds. If you flip to the first page, we have some bond statistics here that talk a little bit about it. So, school corporation issued its 2019 bonds in the amount of $8,815,000. There is now the opportunity to refinance those bonds for debt service savings. So if we go down to that chart, the refunding bond per amount, those would be the new bonds. So you'd have to issue $8,350,000 worth of new bonds to refinance the currently outstanding amount of $8,750,000. The average coupon of the refunded bonds, that's the interest rate that you're currently paying. So you're currently paying 2.96% on the outstanding bonds. The arbitrage yield, that represents the estimated interest rate on the new bonds. So you're effectively lowering your interest rate by about a full percent here. I will make note, all of these are current estimations. This is the current market rates. You are not selling bonds today. This is merely the first step in the approval, as Dennis mentioned. Typically, we would be ready to sell bonds, get through the process, put the documents together, get through the rating presentation, somewhere in the next 30 to 60 days. So you have market risk, right? Interest rates could go up, but they also could come down. So I do want to mention, when I talk about the savings here in a minute, this isn't, hey, we're approving this tonight, these savings are automatically locked in because it doesn't work that way. So based on current market rates, if you could lower your interest rate by that full percentage, you would see cash flow savings of $567,000. You take that back to a present value, as of today, your savings are about $515,000. One of the key metrics that we always look at in refinancing is the percentage savings of refunded bonds. The general rule of thumb is 3%. You want to see 3% higher of savings before you really start to take these first steps. You can see you're currently almost 6%. So that's a really good savings number. That's something that we'd like to see in taking this first step. We're obviously going to monitor interest rates on a daily basis. As Dennis mentioned, this doesn't commit you to move forward with the refinancing. If we get 30 to 60 days out and we're ready and rates have gone up, you simply shelve it and you wait until rates hopefully come back down at some point. So again, there's no commit, not locking anything in today. This is the first process to be able to kind of move forward and get everything ready to potentially sell bonds in the next 30 or 60 days. Questions on this page? I know there's a lot of numbers. So the next page.
I'm sorry. I heard the the previous meeting and your discussion to that point. Can you give us a sense of how much the interest rates would potentially have to rise before we would not be at that 3% which you said would be?
Yeah, so so and I should have mentioned this too. That last line there, the PV savings of a one basis point change. One basis point is .01 of a percentage point. So if we say 50 basis points, that's half of a percent. So each basis point that rates go up, you're losing about $6,500. So you would need rates to go up, let's say, probably in the 40 to 45 more basis points to get to kind of that break even if you're looking at 3%, which is very realistic. We've seen rates go up 40 to 45 basis points over a 30 to 60 period, 30 to 60 day period a lot. We have seen rates go up about 50 basis points over the last two months. So yeah, you're looking somewhere in that 40 to 50 basis point range before you would get below that 3%, which at that point, we would advise the school corporation to not move forward at that point. There's no limitation on this resolution, so it's not like, hey, if you don't sell bonds in the next 60 days, you have to come back and do this process all over again. This allows Dr. Sanders and Matt essentially to be able to say, yes, let's move forward if the market dictates at some point in future.
Thank you.
Sorry, what did you say, the trend to us the last couple of months?
So if you go to the next page, we show an interest rate graph. We take this back to the beginning of 2019. There's always some bumps along the road, but you can see that the interest rates have generally come down over the last two years. That huge spike, as you probably guessed it, was COVID. Through the market, obviously, in a tizzy, we saw it go way up, but we saw it immediately come back down and actually lower than it had ever been. There at the very end, you can see that we had kind of been trailing low, and then we see kind of a little bit of a spike up. So that's really since the beginning of February. We've seen rates come up about 50 basis points. So I think we had sent numbers to the school probably at the beginning of February. That savings number was about $900,000. So there has been a significant amount of savings that has been lost in that two-month period, but there's no reason that that couldn't come back in the next two months. We always advise our school clients, get everything ready so that if the market's there, you can move forward. If it's not, then you just sit and wait. We don't want to see the market be fantastic, and then we have to go through this process and you miss that, miss the boat a little bit. So again, it's something we're going to be monitoring on a on a weekly basis. We hope that rates come back down. We have typically seen this sort of action happen a couple times a year, really over the past five to eight years. They've always come back down, as I mentioned earlier. I think this might be a little bit different. I'm not sure we're going to see them come back down to the lows. If you pay attention to the market at all, you've heard inflation. I think there's real concern about the inflation. How realistic that is, I don't know. But as you know, it's what the market perceives to be happening, not necessarily reality. So again, I I don't have my crystal ball with me unfortunately tonight. I do think we're going to somewhat stabilize here. I hope to see it come back a little bit, but it's anyone's guess at this point what things are going to look like in a month or two. The next two pages are really just more information on the market. There's a market forecast on the next page on the top right. Some of you probably pay attention to what the Fed is doing. They have kept rates very low. They have mentioned that they're not seeing inflation right now, not really speaking to the future, but that we have not seen much inflation to this point. And then the last page shows a little bit more of a of a history of interest rates going back even further. The market's always moving up and down. I think this is just something that we're going to continue to monitor, feed the information to Dr. Sanders and Matt. But again, this is just the first step to allow the school administration to move forward if and when the market presents itself.
So can I ask a quick?
Absolutely.
So this resolution, basically, we're stepping away, the board is at this point. When we do this resolution, Dr. Sanders, we're getting rid of him the authority to work with you guys?
That is that is correct. So the resolution, I believe, does does have a minimum savings threshold, if I'm not mistaken. I don't have that number off the top of my head. We can see that. So there's a number in the resolution that says you have to hit X dollars of savings. So say that's $300,000. Dennis is going to find it. If you cannot, if you can meet that number of savings, Dr. Sanders and Matt then have the authority to say, move ahead. So yes, you're giving your blessing, setting that minimum savings threshold.
Is that a net savings or is that savings?
It's net. And all of these numbers are net of all of the fees that you would pay professionals. So that is truly a net savings numbers that we have shown.
I'll, we don't have in the resolution a threshold savings figure. Sometimes we put that in resolutions, but a lot of times we don't, just with the understanding that superintendent and the business manager are going to coordinate with Stiefel on what makes sense at the time of the market. But as you've heard Matt say, you know, the advice is, if it falls below a 3% savings absent extraordinary circumstances, you know, the the advice is going to be to hold off on taking any action.
So you've got 30 to 60 days of work to do to be ready to sell. And then at that point, how quick, if you like the way the market is, how quick do you get?
Immediately. So we're going to go through, just like we did in previous bond issues, we're going to work on that official statement. That's what you would call a prospectus, if you're looking to buy a bond. It has all the information on the bond, the repayment schedule, all the information about the school corporation. We are most likely going to go through a rating process. Most of you are probably familiar with that happening on the last bond issue. So again, that's going to be somewhere in that 30 to 45 days. Once we have the official statement done and we have the rating, we can go the next day if things make sense. So that's why we're getting getting ready quickly so that if the market presents itself, we can move just like that. If not, we have everything ready that when it does make sense to move forward, that we can do that quickly.
Yeah, Matt, if it's okay, if I could ask, this might help with some of the board members in the process. Once the ratings achieved and and we've got the official statement out of the market, the preliminary official statement, isn't the process typically that, you know, when you say, all right, the market's ready, we're ready to go, you might hold a prepricing call with Dr. Sanders and the business manager and say, here's what we look, here's a snapshot of what we think if we went to the market tomorrow or the next day, and kind of give us the thumbs up?
Yeah.
And then assuming that's the case, and you do go to market, it's not until that pricing occurs and the school has signed a bond purchase agreement that you're formally committed. At that point, you're locked in. But there are a series of informational steps that will take place leading up to that decision to to actually pull the trigger on the pricing.
Yeah, and we spend, our sales force will spend about the week before the actual bond sale talking to investors, saying, hey, we have Richland Bean Blossoms Bond Sale coming up, we think, next week. What interest rate do you think that you would buy at? So we have a lot of this information. The prepricing call typically is the day before. We would disseminate all that information to Dr. Sanders and Matt to say, here is where we think the interest rate is going to be. Based on that, here's your savings. Are you comfortable moving forward? Typically, you don't have too many surprises the day of the sale, absent a big market movement event. You know, the the Fed comes out and raises interest rates, we go to war with someone, you know, COVID-21 comes, something random like that. So we would, we would, we would have all that information that we could disseminate to the team so that going into the day of pricing, they know pretty closely what that savings is going to be. So it's not a, hey, let's go out in the market, we think things look good, and then it's just a random result. We will know going in pretty close to the dollar amount what those savings will be on the day of pricing.
It's about a week, actually.
So so we will have that official statement. That will be sent out to our sales force. They will start having those conversations. It doesn't always take a week. We have turned around and done it in a day, but we do like to have some of those conversations with investors just so that there aren't any surprises. So that pre-marketing process takes a week, but that can happen simultaneously with us finishing all these other documents.
Obviously, you you track these trends from what you've shown us. Maybe every couple of weeks or something like that, you could send us a, hey, just wanted to let you know where the markets at. I don't know where to go on this. I'm sure I could, but maybe, and then once we get to the point where we're ready to go, maybe if you could let us know on a weekly basis how things are going and and that way we kind of have it in the back of our hands what's going on.
Yeah, that's, we'd be happy to do that.
And that really shouldn't be a problem. We are in regular communication with Stiefel, and so it's not like there won't be any conversation or discussion, and one day they'll call us up and say, we're ready to go. We we will, I guarantee you, we will be having those regular conversations, and we will, they will inform us already on a weekly basis, I'm sure. And we'll be able to move forward as quickly as possible.
And that really is the typical process. Once things actually get approved, if you all approve tonight, we would be updating really every couple of weeks, if not even quicker, if the market moves. So if it's every two weeks, but if something happens in between, we would be in that communication to let you know, hey, this is good news or bad news or whatever happens with the market. So that that's not a problem.
Yeah, I just remember getting that in the past, so it'd be nice to, I mean, I'm sure you guys are tracking that anyway.
And we'll share that with the board, right.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And then the process, I just make sure I get this straight. Once we, once we pass this resolution, assuming it passes tonight, you're going to start the process of getting it rated now? We incur that cost?
Yes.
Okay, so that's all done. All the legwork's done ahead of time?
Correct.
And then if we took expire the other bond, there's no penalty or anything? It's just done? We we pay it off and replace it?
There is no, so when you sold the 2019 bonds, there were, there was no prepayment penalty, meaning that you could pay that back without penalty, no premium, no extra dollars whatsoever. So you are good to just repay the principal on that at your discretion? Absolutely. Yeah.
Is there a number of times you can refund?
So no, in this, we can, we can go into this a little bit. So typically, when you sell municipal bonds, and for instance, let's say you're going to build a new elementary and you're going to sell and pay it back over the next 20 years. Typically, you set a period of time that says, hey, at year 10, we can come back and refinance those bonds at that year. Typically, all municipal bonds have what we would call a call option. Because the 2019 bonds were placed directly with the bank, that bank said, we do not care if you have a call option. These can be callable at any point. So this really is a little bit out of the norm to be able to come back this quick and and see some savings. Typically, you would have to wait seven to 10 years. I mentioned the the Tax Act of 2017, I think, in the in the previous meeting, but it used to be that you could, what we called an advance refunding, meaning you could refinance these bonds in advance of the call date at any point. So if you set a 10-year call, rates go down, you could come back in two years. But you had to pay full principal and interest through that call date. So it was almost looked at a little bit of a penalty. You cannot, you cannot advance, or you cannot refund bonds as many times as you want. We equate bonds to mortgages a lot. This is one of the big differences. Mortgage rates go down, you walk in the next day and you get the new rate. They go down again, you walk back in, you get the new rate. You cannot do that with municipal bonds, typically because of this call feature. These bonds, this is something we'll talk with Dr. Sanders and Matt as well, because we're selling it in the public market, there's typically always a call feature that's not within the next few years. So these unlikely, these are not likely to ever be refinanced again.
Do you ever be, or at least not for half the term?
I would, I would, well, I don't want to say ever be, but not for the next, say, the shortest, typically, the shortest call we ever see is a five-year call. You pay a pretty stiff penalty for that. Typically, we would see more of like a seven to 10-year range. So there may be an opportunity to do that again, but it would be a lot of years down the road.
And Matt, you might mention extraordinary circumstance if taxable rates got super low, they could?
Yeah, yeah, and that is a great point, too. So you always have the opportunity to refinance bonds on a taxable basis. So theoretically, you could, you could refund your bonds as many times as you want, but you'd have to do it with taxable rates. We're talking about tax-exempt bonds. Taxable rates are always higher. Typically, you don't see that many taxable refinancings, but theoretically, it is possible to take advantage of taxable rates if they were to go lower. You're talking about a rate less than 2%. Could rates go significantly lower? I suppose theoretically it's possible. I would say that that is highly, highly unlikely, though.
Any further questions?
No, so I would, if we're ready, I would go ahead and recommend consideration to approve the refunding resolution for the 2019 bond.
Make motion to approve.
I'll second.
Wait a second. Any other questions? Discussion? All those members say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so for item, now that you've approved the resolution, item number seven is to consider the approval of an engagement agreement with Stiefel. We will need an underwriter to be able to move forward, and we have a great relationship with Stiefel. We would recommend your approval.
I will move approval.
I second.
Wait a second. Questions? Discussion? All those members say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for coming in and presenting to us. Thank you for hard work, ladies. Our next item is consideration to the votes of surplus Blackberry Books.
Okay, so Alicia Dirk is our wonderful media specialist at EHS, and she is working on her PhD at Indiana State University. As part of her program, she is actively involved in an internship. And so I've asked Mrs. Dirk to make this presentation to the board tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Is it okay if I step a little closer?
Sure.
So I'll start with the objective of purging the library. The objective is to make room for the renovation, for the for the renovation for the media center, and we're going to, we are going to eliminate some of the bookshelves in the media center to make room for seating and technology. And in addition to that, the library had not been purged, I don't think, ever. It's maybe 30 years. So that was, that was the objective, and so the process has been, I have called upon each, each department in the high school to come in and take a look at the books in their discipline or their topics, and to go through them and take, weed out what they can no longer use. So teachers have done that. Some, some departments have done that. And then after they went through, I went through and touched every single book and looked at every single book to determine whether it was still relevant to curriculum, whether students were still checking them out. And then I would go ahead and continue the purge in that spirit. So every book has been, has been touched and looked at. Some books haven't been checked out in a decade, and so, and then also, I also purged some multiple copies that were probably once used in classrooms that are no longer relevant. So this was all also to support students. Being in the library has been very enlightening the last two years. Sometimes, they just can't even see what is there that they want to, that they're interested in, or what is relevant to them now. So ridding the library of all of these extra books has made it more efficient for students to come in, and just, as I have mentioned before, more relevant. So that's, that's been the process, and we are finished with it. The books are now going to be taken to the same place the non, excuse me, the fiction books have been taken, and that is, we're donating them to the Monroe County Public Library, if you all approve that. Questions?
Certainly recommend your approval.
I move to approve the purging of the...
Yeah, I'll second. Thank you for your presentation.
You're very welcome.
I will say that the library was purged about 25 years ago, and I found it a very painful process as a teacher. However, the shocking thing was exactly what you're suggesting. Students found the library a little friendly, and they used it a lot more. Once, it was easier to find the meat among the chaff. So thank you for the hard work, because I know how, how difficult that must have been, how much dust you must have breathed and touched all those books, but thanks.
You're very welcome. You're very welcome.
Thank you very much, yes.
Is the collection still added to from time to time?
Yes, and so, thank you for bringing that up. So during this entire purge, I, I rid the library of a lot of technology books. They're just simply so outdated. It would not make sense to keep them. And so my suggestion is that we very selectively add to certain disciplines such as technology or the sciences as appropriate. And a lot of that, I think, will, will hinge on teacher recommendations, and what's going to support classrooms and curriculum, and just what is relevant, you know. I, I think the key is going to be to be very selective, because there's so much that we can access on the internet at this point. But yes, to, to your point, yes, we do need to replace some of them, but not, not nearly as many as I've written the library up at this point.
Some people, even younger, not just the sons of books, sometimes just really like to have that book in their hands. So I'm glad that the collection continues to be growing in the areas as time, time changes.
I, you know, most students prefer to have a physical book in their hands, so I think it is very important that we keep a streamlined, relevant collection for students to use and to access. And I have noticed, even with COVID, there are, there still are a lot of students that come in, and they do find it easier to find books now. They, they come in, they find something that they're interested in, and I've seen increased foot traffic.
Any further questions, discussion?
You're very welcome.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item is consideration to approve substitute teacher wage changes. Mrs. Dirk.
Hi, guys. This is, it's been a number of years since RBB's made some adjustments to our daily rate paid to our substitute teachers, and as you guys well know, they're a very important part of, of the daily process and making sure that, you know, our students are getting a quality education, and stepping in and filling in for our teachers when they aren't able to be there on a specific day. Obviously, across the state and across the country, filling substitute teacher is an issue. We've partnered with Kelly Services, and through the course of this year, we've continued to get into a better and better place with that. This more so is about staying competitive with our pricing and our pay. If you're not competitive, and already what's a short market to find the type of people that we need to fill these positions, it makes that even harder. And so this is to make sure that we stay competitive and fair with that daily rate wage for those people. And so the, the wage increases $10 more a day, so we have a couple of different levels of, of payment that we have for those individuals. And so we would be taking what would be our typical $55 a day job to $75, and the 80 to a 90. And so it's a $10 increase in the wage. Again, reminder, through Kelly Services, we still dictate what the wage is that we pay for that daily rate. They charge us a markup rate based on providing the service of helping us fill those needs. And so the average fill would cost us about $13 more per, per absence fill using Kelly Services. But again, it's about a $10 a day increase to the average daily rate fill that we, that we see across the corporation. I gave you guys some rough numbers on an estimate of what it would look like in a really perfect scenario of taking a high average of 15 absences needing filled on a daily, daily, which is probably a high average. If you times that by every single day in the school year, and then you took the $13, you, you get a possible maximum increase of around $30,000. And that's in a perfect scenario. Again, when we looked at this, we made sure that it was something that was justifiable and financially stable for us to do in a, in a normal year. And obviously, in this year, that hasn't been a normal year. You're not going to see that type of increase to those fills. And as we continue to work towards having a 90 or better fill rate on a daily basis, this helps in that big picture, and again, keeps us competitive where we stand. So I ask for your approval in, in the changes to the substitute daily rate.
Motion?
I move approval.
Any questions, comments, discussion?
What, what do you say the current fill rate is this year?
So our current rate, over the last, over the start of the year, it was probably close to 50%. We started the year off very rough. It was hard, and obviously, COVID plays a factor into that. Over the last about month and a half, we've hovered around the 75% range, sometimes a little lower, sometimes a little bit more. But it's progressively been getting better. Kelly's increased their efforts in a number of areas to help maintain and get connected with people locally to make sure that they're able to get into our subpool a little easier. And so that's had a direct effect as well. So we've continued to partner and work with them to make sure that those things have, have continued to improve our, our efforts in substitutes, but it, it hovers around that range. And so it's continuing to get better, and it has continued to get better progressively for about, ever since we came back for the second semester, honestly.
In your, in your opinion, you think Kelly is earning their wages?
Here recently, we, we've seen some dramatic, dramatic shifts in some of the things that we really wanted to see. And so, yeah, they, they've really increased those efforts, and they've started to really pay off.
Are you educated there's a different daily rate? What are the different daily rates based on?
So the, just someone with a substitute teaching license, that, that fill job would be $75 a day. For those individuals that have a four-year degree, they would get paid $90 a day. For someone that has no teaching license and is filling a long-term leave, and we would say that's more than three weeks, so a position, say a teacher's out for something that's occurred for three weeks or longer, and you have a substitute fill that job, there's a lot more that goes into that than maybe your, your typical one-day fill. And so that would be $95 a day for the increased workload that they would take on to make sure that those students have the instruction that they need.
Any further questions?
That last category was long-term subs. You had, you had that third category was long-term sub for more than three weeks?
Yeah, yeah, so that'd be a long-term sub.
And they get another bump then?
That would be the $95 a day. Yep, and then we have our rate for what would be someone who has a teaching license. They would make, we would pay them the rate, and that rate did not change. So that's an already a very competitive rate. And so we left that. For someone who has a teaching license, on the 16th plus consecutive day, they would make $196.
Yes, and I, in terms of Kelly Services, I would say that, that probably the start of the second semester, they really stepped it up, and our satisfaction level, the, since the beginning of the, the second semester has increased significantly. I feel like we are at a comfortable level with the, our subpool, and Matt and representative from Kelly Services meet or talk on a regular basis, and then Matt gives me a, a summary of, of that phone call. They have, Kelly Services has, I think, at least two occasions have met the substitute teachers on site in order to go through the paperwork to expedite the process. And so it's, it's paid off quite a bit. We're in a lot better shape at this point.
What's your current fill rate is?
We've been, we've been hanging around the 75. I think last week, it was 75 to 78%. And so it's continued to get better since we've come back from second semester as our subpool has started to increase as well.
There are still certain areas I think we can work harder at. Probably, one of the hardest positions to fill would be a special education class. And I was, I haven't talked to Matt with this, but I came up with the idea that maybe we ought to try to see if we can have some training opportunities for our substitute teachers for special education to make them feel more comfortable stepping into that role. And if we could hopefully provide that training, the subs feel more comfortable working in a special education class, that would significantly help our fill rate.
You know, are we looking at, at the fill rate for previous years to see if Kelly really has made that much of a difference, Sherwin?
Yeah, so we'll make, we'll compare that.
Yeah, that'd be very interesting to see.
Yeah, at the end of the year, start to really take a look at how that compares. And obviously, you know, you, you'll take a look at those numbers a little bit harder. Obviously, you look at some of the things with COVID. But like I said, it did get off to a very rough start. Very honestly, it did. But here in the second half of the year, it's, it's been a lot better.
And our, we have some substitute teachers that, they are very dedicated, and I, I believe that they're dedicated because it's professionally rewarding to them. And I feel that they deserve this increase, especially, like I said, those who work day in and day out and who've been with us for a long time.
And it has been quite a long time since we've adjusted these regulations. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, post carries. Stay there. Next thing is consideration to approve the revised custodial rates and scale.
So we've had a, a lot of discussion over this, and obviously, again, we think about COVID and some of the extra challenges that have come along. But really, throughout, since I've, I've come to RBB, we've, we've experienced significant challenges with custodial crew and just some turnover and things like that. We've really taken a hard look at where we start with our, our starting rate, and again, trying to always make sure that we are competitive with our wage, with where we stand with neighboring school districts and people around the area as well. We, our starting rate right now is 1165, and back in 2010, there were some changes made to reduce the starting rate of custodians. And so we have kind of a two-tiered scale right now. We have for a scale for custodians that were hired prior to 7-1 of 2010, and then we have custodians that are hired after 7-1 2010. And so the rate scale and adjustment is looking at those hired after 7-1 of 2010. And so what I want to do is I want to move that starting rate to a more competitive rate, which is $13 an hour that starts. And then I've shortened the scale to top out exactly about where it topped out before, but in the past, it was about 25 years to age through that scale. And so I would like it to age out through about 10 years. And so they can move through the scale a little sooner, and they start out at a more competitive rate, is what we see around our area, and so that we can make sure to continue to get more and more quality employees that stay with us for a long period of time. As you know, when positions turn over a great deal, it causes a great deal of strain on the buildings and the principals and the staff to make sure that, again, you're constantly training and bringing in new people. The effectiveness of what it is that you're doing takes a lot more effort to make sure that you meet the need than if we can make sure that we attract the people that we want all the time right up front, and we can keep those people for a long period of time. And so that's what we want. We want to bring people in and make sure that we keep them for a long period of time. And so hopefully, that helps us do the... I ask you guys' approval.
Motion?
I'd move approval.
I'll second.
Any questions, discussion?
So are we still going to have two different segments, like the, the current custodians that have been here a long time? The ones that didn't get hit in 2010 will stay right where they're at?
So it does not affect, it does not affect that side of it, no, because they're already making a much, a much higher rate than what the people are hired prior to 2010. They're already at a fair competitive wage, and so we're addressing the, the people that are on that different side of that scale for the people hired prior.
So we're going back, we're correcting what had to happen in 2010 because of the budget?
Yeah, we're getting back, we're getting back to a more competitive rate.
Except for the people that are current custodians that didn't get hit in 2010, are they going to be affected by that 25 down to 10?
No, that, that will not change. That scale will not change whatsoever. That one will still stay what it is currently.
But the new people, though, will tap, will max out after 10 years instead of 25?
Their scale would end at 10 years, so they will get through the scale sooner, which is a benefit to the employee.
So anybody on the new scale has to equal on the old scale?
That's what, yeah. I want to make sure that people that, that were on the old scale don't get punished.
No.
Okay. Okay.
I think at one point, there was a real weird state, step. It was kind of some minor steps the first few years, and then there was a big giant step at one point. And I think when we redid it in 2010, we kind of evened out the steps. And I was like, we need to, to increase that level to be competitive.
And the last part of that, and the second part of it, is that I wanted to do a yearly stipend for our head custodians in each building. We have one head custodian in each building to do a $1,000 stipend for the extra duties that they take on throughout the course of the year, whether it's with, you know, taking on things that are asked of them of their building principal, or keeping track of supplies and ordering and communicating with Arnold or different people of that nature. They take on some extra responsibilities. And it's pretty rare for a school corporation to not ask someone to take on that, that type of role and not put any sort of extra monetary incentive behind it. And so I would like to do, starting with the next school year for 2020, 21, 22 school year, do a $1,000 stipend for the head custodian at each building as well.
I think it's going to stay in the same, the same format as before, right?
No, this is strictly has to do with wage.
Wage, okay. Okay. Thanks.
Any further questions?
I guess if, presumably, on an annual or semi-year, by annual basis, we will be looking at increasing the, the steps by a couple percent or whatever it might be, but it would be, this is where we would get people to at this point.
Right.
Any further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is also for that. It is consideration to purchase a two thousand and twenty-one Hybrustat tractor.
So the tractor that we have now is kind of sitting dead in the water right now. It's about fifteen, sixteen years old. It's a major piece of equipment that our maintenance and ground crew use around the corporation year-round. Not only does it mow many, many acres that we have, but it helps out during the winter and all seasons throughout the school year. We had just put some money into it last year, which was several thousand dollars. It continues to have faults and continuing to fall apart. The latest bill that we would get to repair it wouldn't even fix all of its issues. It would simply get it back up to run for who knows how much longer. And so we're continually pouring money into what is a poor investment at this point. We've gotten, we sourced five different quotes for a tractor of at least what it is that we have now, if not better. And so we, from those quotes, we would like to go with the Bobcat tractor. It was the second lowest quote. It was second lowest by about seventeen hundred dollars, but it did have a far better warranty aside from just a two, some, most, all the other ones just had a two-year bumper-to-bumper warranty with your typical six-year powertrain warranty, which is on all the lubricated parts. This came with a five-year bumper-to-bumper warranty along with that powertrain. And again, we believe it's a better machine than what we felt with the low quote was. And so not only are we feel like we're going to get better equipment that's going to serve us better and for longer, we're also going to get a better warranty that more than makes up for the price differential with what we're going with. So it reduces the liability of the school corporation if indeed something were to happen with the tractor.
For the record, could you say what the amount is for the Bobcat?
The Bobcat, the trade-in value on the new, on the old tractor with sixteen-five. The original price of the tractor was forty-nine thousand, eight hundred seventy-four dollars. You would take off the discount that they're giving us, the trade-in, and then put on a freight charge. And so the charge would be twenty-two thousand, twenty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents.
And where'd you purchase, where are you going to purchase it from?
Bobcat here in Aliceville.
Where's the Bobcat, where?
Here.
Oh, right here in Nelsa, okay. Yeah, thank you.
Do we have a motion to purchase a Bobcat under the trade-in value and the total value?
I'm going to the shrivel.
I'll second.
Move to second. Any further questions? The last three of these items, you're there, but it's been spending items. Have they been in your projections for the cash flows and all that? Have you already figured them in or this wouldn't, we're still pretty good?
So this would come from, we would buy this from GO. We'll buy this from the existing GO that we already have. As you guys have seen, I started creating that master replacement schedule for anything from tractors to mowers to air handling units to water heaters, all of these different things. And so this was something that we already had our eye on, that we knew was coming up and I thought it was going to be next year. It's just come up a little sooner. And so we already knew that this need was going to come very quickly. It just came a little sooner than what we had expected.
So it comes out of GO bond, it's not come out of our operations?
Not this one, no.
Okay. And the two previous with the, our employees, they, that's been considered in your projections already?
Yes.
Make sure people know that we're...
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely, yes.
Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll get your tractor. Our next item is consideration to approve the two thousand and twenty-one summer school plan, Dr. Sanders.
A year ago, we were just getting started on what we thought was going to be a two-week period of doing e-learning, which unfortunately turned into the rest of the school year with the hope that we were going to start the two thousand and twenty-one school year on a normal basis. But of course, we understand the different schedules that we've had to choose this year out of safety and precaution. So we have obviously, over the last year, have demonstrated that safety is our number one priority. However, one of the consequences of going the route of being safe, which we would do that again, is that the amount of time that students have been out of the classroom and have missed that direct instruction. And so we want to, the principals and Matt and I, we have discussed this and we want to, to, we wanted to create a summer school program that would be above and beyond what we've ever done before in order to try our best to utilize those summer months to address students who may have fallen back on credits, have fallen back on their academics. We have had conversations with Matt and I, we went around and met with each principal individually and talked about their needs, what they would like to do. We really have tried our best to really put our students' academics number one this summer. And it's always one of the most important considerations that we have, obviously, that's what we're all about, is education. And so it really feels good to try to implement a summer school program to address the lost instructional time. So what we're presenting to you is a schedule for EPS, it would be June seventh through the twenty-fourth and July twelfth through the twenty-ninth. At EIS, the dates will be July twelfth through the twenty-ninth. And Edgewood Junior High School will be July nineteenth through the twenty-ninth. Edgewood High School will be June seventh through July second and if needed, July nineteenth through the twenty-ninth. So the students would actually be in school from eight-thirty to twelve-thirty. The teachers would come in a half hour earlier and their hours would be eight to twelve-thirty. The teacher pay would be forty dollars per hour and the pay for instructional assistance would be fifteen dollars per hour. One of the major changes for this summer school would be to give parents the opportunity to sign up for bus transportation. And also, we will be able to offer free breakfast and lunch to the students. The timeline would be to ask the board for approval tonight. Then between March twenty-third and April ninth, the schools would be identifying the students who would be participating in summer school. Now I say to April ninth, that will most likely probably go right up to the start of the summer school for each school, especially at the high school. But we want to be able to identify as many students as possible so we could, we can have our director of transportation work on bus routes. And that would happen between April twelfth and the twenty-third. And then at the beginning of May, share that information with parents on what summer school will be like and that their student will be identified and the bus information to parents. And like I said, there's, that's a whole nother month then until the start of summer school. So we will be having constant communication with parents then over the month of May on summer school, on bus information and making sure that everything's ready to go when we're ready to start the summer school period for each school. Typically, for summer school programs, you either see instruction for summer school to be right after the school year or the other option schools often go with is a jumpstart program. And so each school, based on the needs of their students, once again, determined whether they wanted to do something right after school or a jumpstart-type program. Now, Matt has done excellent job of financial analysis of, based on the needs that the principals said that they thought we needed to do in order to make up for this lost instructional time. Matt took that information and has come up with analysis that it will cost an estimated two hundred thousand dollars for this extended summer school program. So we are looking at three different possible sources of funding. Every summer, the Indiana Department of Education provides some summer school money for us, but when you're talking a two hundred thousand dollar amount, what the state will, will, through their regular summer school account, provide will be a minimal part of that overall budget. We were looking at utilizing our CARES Act dollars to pay for this. And there's also a House bill, House Bill one thousand eight, a learning loss and recovery grant that is going through the legislation at this point. And I believe it's in the appropriations committee as we speak. But if that is approved, then we will use that source of money first. And I think it's just common sense to use the funds from the learning loss and recovery grant first and the Indiana Department of Education, their regular summer school, and then see what's left to take it out of the CARES Act dollars. And so that's our proposal for our summer school for this year.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Move to second. Any questions?
I do one on the second session for the high school. It says if needed, what would that be contingent on?
Well, I could probably let Mr. Ackerman speak to that.
I'll be glad to speak to that, but you're going to have to repeat your question. Your mics aren't working very well tonight, so.
Okay. My question was, the, we've got the June seventh to July second summer school, which is, I mean, I get that one, but it also says July nineteenth to twenty-ninth, if needed? What would that be?
It would be on Apex, you know, Mr. Demoss, it's hard for us to predict high school students attendance in summer school, but we have a lot of students through the e-learning and just through the school year that have not earned a lot of credits. So if we could get a second group of students in on just Apex to get what possibly one or two credits, it would be an open, we wouldn't try to have English classes, math classes, it would just be on Apex, poor credit recovery, to try to recover a few more credits. I don't know what to expect. I don't know if we'll be able to, if we'll have enough students to operate, but if we do, we definitely would like to have that opportunity.
It sounds like a good idea. I was just, that was something I...
Yeah, and then if they, because we have Apex classes through the year as well, so even if they got started, got a lot of it done, they didn't finish it, then we could schedule them into an Apex class through the school year. So again, just an opportunity to try to get a few more credits.
Give them a little incentive to finish up that first one, too.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. Or that could be, they could maybe get, in the first session, if they take Apex class, they could get two and a half done and finish up the third one in that second summer session.
You wouldn't anticipate that this would be banking credits ahead of time, though, like a senior taking economics or something?
No, it's credit, it's credit recovery only.
Recovery, okay.
Yeah, credit recovery only.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I just had one question. So Mr. Irvin, all three of these different buckets are accounted for financially for summer school, right? Out of all three of these buckets that Dr. Sanders mentioned? Is that correct?
Yes.
It's already been taken care of?
Yeah, the learning loss and recovery grant, that's something that we would have to, the House Bill one thousand eight, we would have to apply for that to get it. But that we're confident that even if we weren't able to get the House Bill one thousand eight through CARES Act dollars or in the summer school allocation that the state has, that we'd be able to take care of that need. And it's well worth it as everybody's kind of struggling, find a way to make sure to get kids caught up, to get them the help that they need. And so, yeah, those are things that we're confident in and that we feel confident in saying, bringing you this plan to say, we know that we can make this work.
Okay. Did we get the CARES Act funding yet?
So the, again, the CARES Act funding is reimbursable. We have the first round budget already done. And so the second round, we have what is our expected estimated allocation. They haven't given us a final allocation for the second round of CARES, but we do know what we tentatively are expected to get. They haven't released us the ability to put together a budget so that they can approve it to start asking for reimbursement. But we know that this is one of the main focuses of those CARES Act dollar uses that are allowable. They've already given us a long list of things that are allowable through those CARES Act dollars. And so we know that we're able to fund that and they'll accept a budget that includes an ask to pay for that sort of thing.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there any other questions?
No.
For you, we already got a motion, yeah?
Yes.
Can you count your questions? Okay. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Our next item is consideration to approve a resolution opposing House Bill one thousand five, Senate Bill four hundred and thirteen, about the education savings accounts and voucher expansion. So Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so I'm asking the RBB CSC School Board to join many other public school boards around the state of Indiana who have approved a resolution in opposition of House Bill one thousand five and Senate Bill four thirteen. Would it be okay if I read this resolution?
Yes, please do.
Whereas the Indiana General Assembly during its two thousand and twenty-one legislative session is considering House Bill one zero zero five, Senate Bill four thirteen, and other bills that establish education savings accounts and expand vouchers. Whereas the Richland Bean Blossom Community School Corporation Board of School Trustees has determined that the Indiana General Assembly should not enact education savings accounts or expand vouchers and should continue to promote and fully invest in Indiana's public schools more specifically. To further the public good, public funds should be invested in improving the schools designed to serve all children and to aid in improving Indiana public school teachers' salaries as recommended by the Governor's Teacher Compensation Commission in its report on December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Indiana already has school choice in the form of open enrollment, charter schools, enrollment in virtual online schools, and the Choice Scholarship Program. Public schools are required to operate in an open, transparent way with all expenditures and decision-making. Non-public schools are not held to that same public standard. Legislators should reduce the overregulation of state and federal bureaucracy that hinders the ability of local schools to innovate and be responsive to parent and community needs. Whereas the cost of education savings accounts and school vouchers are covered exclusively by our state's school tuition support fund, further providing further public dollars to fund our public schools and increase teacher salaries. Whereas the board believes that that public schools provide a strong educational environment for Indiana's children and education savings accounts. If enacted and expanded, school vouchers would put this environment at risk by directing resources away from those schools to non-public schools and/or home schools that are not subject to the same rigorous scrutiny for their use of taxpayer resources. Now therefore, be it... Now, therefore, being resolved, the board opposes the passage and signing of House Bill 1005, Senate Bill 413, or any other bill expanding vouchers and/or creating education savings accounts, approved by the Richland Bean Blossom Community School Corporation Board of School Trustees at its regular meeting this 22nd day of March 2021.
Mr. President, I move approval of the resolution as presented.
I'll second.
Moved it seconded. Any questions, discussion? To me, the key is the accountability.
Yep.
Public schools are accountable to the public, and these other entities where the children can go are not, and that's just not right. If you are using public dollars, they should be used in a public school and be available for any and all students. And so, I wholeheartedly support this resolution. Anything further? Now, that all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Impetus. Okay. The next item is miscellaneous informational items. Dr. Sanders?
Sure. First of all, the, our Drumline and Winter Guard will be participating in state finals this Saturday, and so, we wish them the very best of luck. Rob and Taft certainly works hard in leading those students, and we congratulate them on their efforts so far and wish them the best of luck. And then, you had in your board packet some information from our Nutrition Services Department. I just wanted to highlight a few of those. First of all, the No Kid Hungry Food Hub will begin at the Boys and Girls Club beginning March 23rd. Nutrition Services Meal Pickup is continuing at Steinsville School until May 26th, and then, we will be offering summer feeding from June 7th through July 30th. Vicki Coffey works really hard at providing our community with, especially our families who are experiencing hardships with the opportunity to have a healthy meal. So, I just wanted to recognize Vicki Coffey and her team.
Great how they've stepped up to the plate, so does we, to support and make sure our kids are getting the nutrition that they need to be successful, so we really appreciate her group. And now, we will have the superintendent's report. Dr. Sanders?
All right, very good. Well, thank you. We are starting our last grading period of the 2020-21 school year, and I just wanted to use these two words, hopefully, to describe the last nine weeks of the school year, and that's to finish strong. We are going to continue with the five-day schedule for in-person students. Right now, we have nine students who are quarantined and zero staff who are quarantined. With the vaccinations that we are seeing more and more of our school staff getting their vaccination, my shot is on Wednesday, and looking forward, never look forward to a shot more than I am this one. We will continue to implement the safety measures that we've implemented all year. We will continue to coordinate with Monroe County Health Department, but I laid out in my report some of the events that, and activities that we look to implement over the nine, last nine weeks of the school year. And I share the junior high and the high school, the spring sports, when those sports will begin with, we have some band concerts and a cabaret night at the high school. We're going to have a virtual contest of champions on April 3rd, and if you didn't have a chance to watch some of the other show choir events, obviously, you love to be there in person, but it's still very nice to be able to watch our students perform, even if it's virtually. And of course, the students themselves, that's what it's all about, they're getting that experience of performing. It's done in a very safe manner, so we're looking forward to that virtual contest of champions. We are working on having a prom on May 1st. We have had several meetings on that already, working with the Monroe County Health Department to make sure that the plans for prom meet their requirements, but we're pretty confident that we're going to be able to have a prom this year. I mean, isn't that good news? I mean, that's exciting stuff there. A spring concert on May 8th. We are getting ready here in about a month to have our iLearn Assessment for this year for grades three through eight. We will have those on April 19th through the May 14th, and then, we are also planning on some type of an in-person commencement on June 5th. Exactly how that will look is still to be determined, because once again, all these events, we have to go through the Monroe County Health Department, and they've been very good to spend, they're very busy people, but yet, they spend a lot of time with us to make sure that we offer whatever we want to do in the safest manner possible. And then, on the back of my report are just some upcoming initiatives that we're going to be implementing with Ready Schools. The media centers in all four schools are being reimagined in order to promote innovative and engaging spaces for the students. We are going to be piloting digital portfolios so that the students can demonstrate their mastery of the soft skills, and the Ready Schools graduate profile that we are building will be able to have these digital portfolios so students can demonstrate that they've met those goals. Also, you see some information on digital fabrication labs where the digital fabrication lab at the junior high, the equipment and the tools are arriving this week, and our teachers will be going through training between now and the end of July. The junior high broadcast team has a new studio space that they will be utilizing. If you haven't had a chance to watch some of their productions, I would be glad to share that link with the board. I'll just do that in my next weekly review to see what they do, and having their own space will certainly help them with that. Megan Scott and Jamie Miller, they have been working with several different organizations throughout the community, and they will be visiting the WTIU studio to gain some information about what they do at that studio, and then, use that information to plan a visit for students to go and check out that information. So, the, our EHS Introduction to Business students, they are actually writing a business plan for the new student-run coffee shop, and I think, I think that's good stuff. That's, I mean, what great experience that is for students. They're not just gonna show up and sell coffee. They are actually developing the business plan for the coffee shop, and they're getting a lot of consultation for that, from that. We are visiting and meeting with more and more businesses, and one of the things that I met with a businessman right before spring break, and through that conversation, he sparked an idea that, you know, I know you're not supposed to think about work on, when on your vacation, but an idea came to me that we need to provide our businesses with very specific ways on how they can partner. So, we're actually working on a form and a little booklet that we're going to share with businesses where they can customize how they want to participate. Do they just, are they just interested in consulting, meeting with our committee once or twice a year? That would be very valuable information. Are they interested in hosting an intern? Are they interested in training our students and our staff in terms of video production and providing some, maybe some financial business information to our students who are developing the business plan for the coffee shop? And then, maybe they're interested in a financial support, and so, we're developing that now, and hopefully, we will be able to get that out to our businesses very soon. And then, finally, there's going to be a lot of activity in the area of construction between now and through next year, actually. The junior high renovation project is still in progress. The work on the new addition and the Makerspace Labs at the junior high, we're going through the punch list on that, but sometime in May, they will start working on the expansion of the cafeteria. The preschool connector project is, continues to progress. They are running about two to three weeks behind because of weather, and so, but they are confident they'll be able to get caught back up. They started on the pool renovation last week, and Friday, Thursday, I think it was, I went over to check it out, and they were actually in the locker rooms and demolishing, demolish, demolishing of some of the locker rooms. The HVAC project, they are working their way through the different units and chillers that are on the list, and they will continue to work on that between now and the end of the summer. The new administration support services building, that is in progress. They were supposed to start last week, but because of some of the rain, that's been delayed, and hopefully, they can start on that very soon. The Innovative Learning Center is just about ready to go out for bid, and so, I hope when we talk about these things, that you could see it's all very student-centered, and that's what excites me the most. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sanders. Our next item would be RBBE comments, and we have Mr. Yules.
Good to see everyone. It's been a much-needed break this last week, so I hope everybody had a little bit of time off. As Dr. Sanders said, here we are, the last quarter of the year, it's hard to believe, and I think it's a good way to keep these kids going, like you said, finish strong. You might have been sitting in my calculus class today, a bunch of seniors who, they'll either finish strong or I'll drag them across one of the two. But I told them the same thing, you know, where you almost made it. And even to my freshmen, you know, this has been a unique experience. Is this causing feedback? Maybe not? Okay. But yeah, finish strong, I think I will use that probably every day as we go. A lot of appreciation tonight. Sometimes I come in here thinking, oh, it's probably not gonna be a busy night, and look at all the lists and everything you're talking about, we always have a lot of stuff going on, and so, appreciate your hard work and keeping everything going. I appreciate the bump in pay for subs, and I know money's tight everywhere, but as we see our regular subs, we really appreciate them, because they do a great job, and sometimes it's hard to get them, and I know Dr. Sanders and I and the discussion group and with Matt Irvin have talked about the bumps in the road with Kelly Services, and we're, it looks like we're clearing a hurdle, and that's great. It's great to see new subs, but always our regulars as well, because they do a great job, so maybe that'll attract even more, because that is very important. Definitely appreciate the soon-to-becoming laptop upgrades. I know when teachers get those in their hands, especially if they've been here since the last one, which I don't even remember when that was, they're gonna love that. Personal story, I just finally upgraded my computer at home. It's been 10 years, you know, I'm just gonna let it go forever until I can't use it. It was almost at that point, and I just got, and I've told my wife, who's a fifth-grade teacher, every day since I've installed it, 10 days, I'm like, you wouldn't believe how fast this works. You wouldn't believe how fast this works. And I said, I know you've heard this, but oh my God, I've even told my kid, a high school senior, who doesn't care, but I'm like, wow, this stuff is amazing. So, that's gonna be a super bonus, since everything is tech-related, so we're definitely gonna love that, so thank you for that. And finally, thank you for the resolution. There've been so many school corporations, I don't know the number, that have signed on, not just some of these school bills this year, House Bill 1005 and the Senate Bill 413, as you said. I could go on and on about that, but thank you to Mr. Kerr about, you know, public dollars should stay public, and it just boggles my mind, but I appreciate your support on that as well, and that's really all I got. I know the spring sports are starting, and we're gonna roll through, and I, hopefully, we'll get over the hump here. I feel like this last nine weeks, once we got all in, I can just speak as a teacher, we started getting traction and consistency, and you can tell the difference when you have them there every day. Yeah, we kind of had to reprogram them a little bit, date the expectations and behavior, but we'll take that any day, because it makes a big difference when they're in front of you every day, so we'll get there, without a doubt. We just gotta keep doing our job, and hoping everybody else does the same. So, with that, we'll see you in April.
Thank you very much, Mr. Yules.
Thank you.
We'll go to board member comments, and I'll start with Mr. Demoss.
Just, it is hard to believe that we're entering the home stretch, as Mr. Yules says, finish strong, but it is exciting. It's exciting to be talking about some sort of a prom, some sort of a commencement, and I also appreciate the fact that the substitutes and the custodians are probably among the least appreciated workers in our school corporation, and I'm glad that we're able to show our appreciation a little bit with what the administration was able to do, and because they do a great job, and they are so vital to everything that we do, so I appreciate that. But good luck to the students and teachers as they make their way through this last quarter, and I'm excited for spring sports. I walked by as the baseball team was, I'm really excited about the baseball season, so...
Mr. Tucker?
Ditto what Mr. Demoss said, and again, it's kind of exciting to see the different spring activities coming about. Glad to see we're gonna have some type of contest of champions in the prom, and apparently, some type of graduation ceremony for the kids. It was, it didn't smell hungover, there's four people sitting here watching kids walk across and pick up a diploma with a stick, we hand it to them with the sticks, nobody gets to see, get close to it. It's interesting, I was here as God, so thank you for that, and I'd like to piggyback on what Mr. Yules said. We have got new laptops since we purged the books last fall, so thank you for purging the books as well at the library that needed to be purged. So, get your vaccine if you haven't done so thus far, and I wanted to reach out to another group. These were skipped over during the consent agenda, so we don't have time to read them all off. There's about 20, 25 people that were appointed tonight to help out spring activities. Thank those people for stepping up and doing it. They average about 14 cents an hour with all the time that goes into that, but they make a big impact on kids. So, thanks for all the appointees tonight for the spring activities.
Thank you. Mr. Gerro?
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I'd like to echo what Mr. Demoss said about the custodians, and they are a great group of people, and we need to show our respect for them. I, too, was very impressed with the people we have doing our coaching here, and especially with Mr. Jones and continuing his career with us, and then, bringing John Chance out of retirement here for the ninth-grade girl's softball coach. I'm anxious to talk to him about that, maybe he needs some help. And I'd like to add, too, just a couple of other things here. The finish strong, I worked for a chief petty officer in the Navy for several years, and he would always say, always up, never down, so... up, never down. So, I think that's what we're at. We've come out of a long winter, so to speak. And now, we're going to head up, you know, we'll keep that going. And Jerry, Dr. Sanders?
Thank you so much.
Yes.
You never cease to amaze me how you keep us, it keeps us advised. And I really appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Are you talking about the one page?
Well, you've got two pages, which you violate my rule. You know, one sheet of paper.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yeah, I likewise agree with everything that my fellow members have stated. Thank you again for the donations. You know, that's super important for our corporation, into our classrooms, for our students. I appreciate seeing those donations each time. I am glad that we are able to continue the five days in class per week. I'm not so sure my children feel that way, but I am very happy about it. I hope everybody had a great break last week. Thank you, Dr. Sanders and Matt, for continually working extremely hard for us. You guys are amazing. And you keep us moving in the direction that we need to go. And we appreciate that so much. The only other request that I have is I really want to know if there's a way that we can get some of our students to come back and talk to us. I have missed them, you know. And now that we're kind of, you know, kind of in the uphill, if that's a possibility, or we could have some sort of a presentation on a screen or something. I just like hearing from them. I like seeing them and seeing how they're doing. So, I would appreciate that.
That is, the other thing I thought about last week was trying to figure out when would be a good time to restart the Mustang moment. And I mean, I'd like to do it as soon as possible. We're hoping to have the board meeting hopefully in April up at the junior high, if it's already. And maybe that's a good time to have some junior high students present.
That'd be fun.
And maybe the video.
Sure.
Yeah.
Especially with the big screen. So, kind of show those off.
Yeah, that's true.
I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. Again, public schools, public dollars. The, one of the things I'm most excited about from tonight is the summer school. Hitting it hard this summer is going to be so important. So many kids did, you know, lose traction. It's when you're not in front of the teacher daily, it is difficult. And so, having such a formidable summer school is a key in making sure that, you know, financially, we find a way to cover it. Appreciate what's done. I do think the refunding of the bonds, saving the corporation hundreds of thousands of dollars is always a positive thing. And so, we appreciate the hard work that goes into that. And I just want to say, I think that we have one of the greatest teams or families at this corporation. My fellow board members are amazing. Our superintendent, our business manager, our principals, our teachers, our staff, the custodians, the bus drivers, everyone is just so, we've just got such a great family here. And I just hope that, you know, everybody continues to see the good things we're doing. You know, every board meeting, there's something new that we're doing for kids and ways to help kids. And as Dr. Sanders said, the theme of all the projects and stuff we're doing is for the students, for education, for academics. And so, just appreciate all the hard work that all of you put in. I can't imagine how many committees and groups and meetings and stuff that you all have all the time. And appreciate all of you. And I'm just proud to be a part of it. So, with that, have a wonderful week. And this meeting's adjourned.